School board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Spalding. Ms. Bresia.
Here.
We have a four in present. Oh, I'm sorry. And Ms. Ailey.
Here. Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get an approval for the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Good evening and thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening to other members of the board and to everyone that has gathered here tonight. I do have one spotlight for this evening, so if you'll join me down front. March is Social Work Month, and the 2024 Social Work Month theme is empowering social workers. Social workers are people who enter the profession because they truly want to help others. They go through years of education, training, and supervision, so they can do the delicate but important work of meeting people where they are and helping them achieve their goals. Manassas City Public Schools is proud to recognize our three amazing social workers during National School Social Work Week, which is March, which was March 3rd through the 9th. And I believe we have two of them here with us tonight. Joanne Gainard, who serves grades nine through 12, if she would come forward. And Danielle Nollet, who serves Weems Dean, Hayden, and Metz. Ms. Latoria Jennings could not be here tonight. She serves Baldwin Intermediate, Baldwin Elementary, Round, and Mayfield, so we appreciate her in her absence as well. We also have some people from our support, Student Support Services Department here. Dr. Chavice Thomas, who is our Executive Director for Student Support Services, so she can come forward. Our social workers fall under that department. And Dr. Colwell is here as well. They provide so much support for our team. So I'd like to go ahead and read the 2024 proclamation in your hearing. As I said, the theme this year is empowering social workers. Whereas, social work is a profession truly dedicated to helping people. Whereas, the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic and complex needs of all people. Whereas, social workers, like ours, put a particular focus on helping people who are vulnerable, oppressed, or living in poverty. Whereas, social workers follow a code of ethics that calls on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people. Whereas, social workers meet people where they are and help people and communities reach their full potential. Whereas, the social work profession far more, for more than a century, has worked to improve this society with social workers playing a role in establishing a minimum wage, social security, and Medicare, and working to ensure equal rights for women, African Americans, and people who are LGBTQIA2S+. Whereas, social workers work in all facets of our society, including schools, hospitals, community organizations, the military, mental health centers, social service agencies, corporations, and local, state, and federal government. Whereas, social workers are on the front lines in helping this nation solve pressing social problems, including an increased demand for mental health services, an opioid addiction crisis, and economic inequality. Whereas, social workers are in high demand, with some states reporting shortages in social work staffing, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics predicting social work will be one of the fastest-growing professions in our nation during this decade. Whereas, a public opinion survey from Ipsos said social work has a public approval rating of more than 80%, and more than half of Americans say social workers deserve higher pay. Whereas, the 2024 Social Work Month theme, Empowering Social Workers, embodies the need for society to support social workers so they can continue to do the life-affirming work they do and help address societal needs. And whereas, social workers in turn empower people, communities, and our nation, including our students, helping everyone achieve their full potential. Now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by America's social workers, not I, but he, Dr. Kevin Newman, proclaim the month of March 2024 as National Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers and Manassas City Public Schools in celebration and support of the social work profession. And it is signed by Dr. Kevin Newman, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you all for all the work that you do for our students and their families. That concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next up is Board Committee Reports, and I'll go to Mr. Hollingsworth for the Academics Committee Report.
Thank you, Chair. Last Tuesday, the Academic Committee met, and we received updates on the Dual Immersion and H3 Pre-K programs. We were happy to see the positive direction in which both programs were trending in. And I'd like to thank Dr. Golzen for her hard work, her and her team. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go on to Citizens' Comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here, and we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing. We do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. Okay, no, no one here to speak on citizens' comments. I'll move along to the public hearing on the budget. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the City of Manassas Public Schools' proposed 24-25 school year, school board proposed budget. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone signed up? No, ma'am. Is there anyone else, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the budget tonight? Okay. Moving along to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Spalding, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. On our discussion agenda tonight, first up, we have Student Achievement. Mr. Craig Gaffeler, Executive Director of Student Achievement, Dr. Ed Stevenson, Director of Instruction, and Ms. Karima Wesselhoff, Supervisor of Gifted, Talented, and Advanced Programs, will provide an update on advanced course and gifted program opportunities.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. We are pleased to have the opportunity to update you about ongoing efforts that began last school year to increase student opportunities for advanced study and improve the quality of our programs. Karima Wesselhoff, our Supervisor of Gifted, Talented, and Advanced Programs, has been diligently leading this work and will be providing tonight's update.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Today's presentation is an update on the advanced courses presentation that was given last year, and will address our advanced courses, our gifted and talented program, as well as the information on the Governor's School at Innovation Park. Maybe? Give me a battery option. Oh, there we go. Got it. I am not in charge of technology. There we go. Let's see. Can you see it on your slide?
Yeah.
Are you on the, the, the pretty picture? There we go. Here we go. All right. So this graphic in front of you depicts the ongoing work of our advanced programs, and our goal is always to support students with rigorous and appropriately challenging coursework and opportunities that allow choice and voice while reaching their full potential. In addition to our advanced course offerings, we want students to make sure that they are engaged with their learning in a manner that allows them to demonstrate their college and career readiness. I'm going to start with the process. The process that we started with this year is we reconvened the Advanced Course Steering Committee that was started last year. My predecessor, Mr. Vargas, held the committee. And what we did is we asked the committee members that were previously on the committee if they wanted to meet, and then to continue to join it, and then we also expanded it to other stakeholders as well. One of our really big goals was to make sure that our stakeholder group was robust and addressed all of members of our community. And so what we did is we met twice a month, starting in October, and it is a pretty committee that addresses most of our stakeholders. So we have all of our central office administrators, we have our content coordinators, our school administration, teachers at from both the intermediate, the middle, and the high school level, as well as school support staff and parents. And we then have continued to extend that invitation. So although we started with a small group, the committee is open and is open for additional members to continue to participate if they would like. The first task was to create and craft a vision and a mission statement, and we did that. And so our mission statement is to ensure that all students can access an appropriately rigorous, engaging, enriching, and culturally relevant education, allowing them to cultivate their communication, creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration skills. And our vision was that Manassas City Public Schools will ensure that all students have access to advanced content. We are committed to providing a strong foundation to all students by removing barriers, supporting early preparation, and creating multiple pathways for success. We will engage our community and families with clear communication, enhancing our transparency, and all students will graduate from MCPS with the skills and the mental fortitude to examine their potential as they pursue post-secondary opportunities as 21st century learners. The next thing we did is we looked back at the decisions or discussions from last year, and it was important for us to have a greater understanding of where Manassas City currently sat with advanced courses, and to that end, we reviewed our data from Osborn High School. We use an adaptation of the DataWise protocol that's out of Harvard University, where committee members were able to look at the data, they were able to analyze it, make imferences as to root causes, and then make recommendations to the committee as a whole. Specifically, we looked at the number of advanced courses that we are currently offering, the types of course we're offering, such as Advanced Placement or AP, Dual Enrollment or DE, as well as honors, as well as the number of students that are enrolled in our advanced courses. What you'll see in the presentation today will come from the committee observations and the action plans that they create as a part of that committee. I use the term recommendation because they made recommendations to us, and so that's the committee as a whole, just to clarify that terminology. And so the committee made these four recommendations, that we look into curriculum development, that we look into vertical articulation, that we increase opportunities for our students, and that we look at opportunities to make sure that our teachers are prepared by providing them professional development opportunities. Each of these four areas then became a subcommittee. So what started as one large committee, these were the findings from that committee, and we've now broken down into subcommittees that are working continuously, that they are working as we speak. All right, our curriculum development team, I'm going to give you guys a little reminder of last year. So last year, when we began the work of decoupling the courses at Osborn High School, it was decided that we were going to phase that work in. And so we are continuing with that plan and that presentation that we did. The class of 2027, which is this year's freshman class, will be the first class that will benefit from the full decoupling of the courses. Next year, most of the classes at the ninth grade and at the 10th grade level will be decoupled and streamlined. And what that means is that we're going to really remove the barriers that students had. For example, previously, if you were in the Integrated Humanities Program, your courses for what you took for science, for English and for history were predetermined, and you didn't, you weren't able to vary from that. So you had to take those courses in that order. By decoupling, students are allowed to pick and choose what they want. So a good example would be, previously, they may have had to take English, Honors English 9, and/or Integrated English 9, as well as AP Human Geography. Next year, they would, they now have the option of taking Standard English 9, Honors English 9, AP Human Geography, US, or World History 1, or Honors World History 1. So they have a myriad of choices that really fits them. So for a student who might really thrive in one area but not another, it doesn't really lock them into a, into a course sequence. Ninth and 10th graders will see this implementation across the board in their core classes, and we'll make sure that we are taking care of the work that goes with that, which means we have some work to do in terms of standardized naming conventions. There's been a lot of confusion around names, that sometimes our names would say, like, English Honors or Honors English, and so making sure that our naming conventions are really standardized, so that it's really clear to families that when they're signing up for the course, they know exactly what they're signing up for. It's really important to us that we determine what skills that means. So when we say a student isn't in an honors class, what does that mean for them? And what are they walking out? What can we, as Manassas City, guarantee that students are getting when we put them out into the world after taking an honors class? We also want to create curriculum documents for these advanced courses. Currently, our advanced courses are using the same standard course documents that our, that our other classes use, and it's up to teachers to differentiate and scale up. So therefore, we're lacking a little bit of consistency, and it's also additional work on the teachers. So we want to create curriculum documents for our advanced courses that are really clear and really outline what our expectations are, and then create a system of accountability for those use of resources. And by that, I mean that we're making sure that we're communicating clearly the process and the practices on how we want that, those curriculum resources and documents to be used. Our next recommendation is for vertical articulation, or the next subcommittee. And so they are looking at our course materials, and they're really specifically looking for complexity. So do we see their rigor in our courses? Do we see that rigor across the board? Or what we're seeing in sixth grade being repeated with the rigor in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade? Or do we see where there's a drop-off in that rigor? We want to make sure that our rigor is consistent across the board. Are we presenting them informational texts to our students? Are we giving students a chance to engage with our curriculum? Are we giving students a chance to make and create genuine products of their learning? And additionally to that, we also want that little accountability piece as well, right? So can we guarantee that when we say they're learning this, or there's a continuity, that that exists? But one of the really big pieces that came out of the vertical articulation is this really cool thing we did with Innovation Park this year. So I have overseen the Innovation Park program, or worked with the Innovation Park program for the last seven years of my career. And although we do have regular meetings with Innovation Park, we have our Executive Committee, our Superintendent's Council, as well as Joint Board. This is the first year that any of the three school divisions have taken teachers from our school over to Innovation Park to do a shadow day. So we had, the math team went in December, and science team went in January, and they went and they got to observe classes and how kids are learning in the classes. And then afterwards, they sat down, they had lunch together, and they did a working lunch where they talked about, here are some strategies that we would like, here are some, here's what we see that your kids are doing really, really well, here's where we think you can support those. And then we've taken those recommendations, and we've already taken them back and started to implement some of them. One of the biggest pieces that came out of that was that in some of the other divisions, students have travel time from when they leave Innovation Park and go to their school, and so they're only taking one or two extra classes at their, at their base schools, where our kids, some of them are taking four classes. And so the kids are really loading up with a lot, a lot, a lot of classes, or tend to struggle a little bit more. They're able to succeed, but they're definitely, there's a level of stress and anxiety that we want to eliminate, so we have implemented that and asked, advised our students on how, better advised our students on how to choose their classes for the following year. And we've already seen our students taking advantage of that. Our next subcommittee is our Professional Development Committee. And it's really important in this committee is that our students felt, or our teachers felt like they were prepared. So oftentimes, teachers, we give them content, and they know their content, but they don't always necessarily feel confident in the scaffolding of the information, and so that was one of the specifics asked that came out. So what we wanted to do with our Professional Development Committee is to implement our training plan. And what that looks like is, first, we have an advanced course training cycle, which is a multi-year program that will address content, data, equity, inclusion, as well as best practices. One thing we noticed is that some of our teachers really were asking for more, and we weren't providing them that yet. We are now. And so one of the things we did is, any advanced course teacher, any AP teacher that wanted immediate, on-the-spot training this year, we sent them to an AP workshop in the fall. That is usually, in total, about a one-day workshop. It's broken into a couple of different evenings. And then every AP teacher, or every teacher that is currently teaching AP, has now been offered the opportunity to attend an APSI, or AP Summer Institute, which is a four-day-long, intense, content-driven professional development that's put on by the College Board. College Board recommends that teachers have it every five to seven years, and so we want, we are committed to offering that to our teachers. And as additional teachers are identified for those classes, they will also have that opportunity. So we're going to make sure that our teachers feel like they're prepared. When they return from that training, we do have some opportunities for them to engage with that work. So it's not a great, good-go-and-go-forth-with-your-knowledge. We want to make sure that we're going to support them when they return as well. And then we're going to extend that scaffolding down to our teachers of the honors classes, because our honors classes will feed our AP classes and our dual enrollment classes, and we want to make sure that we have a really good continuity between those. And another really big thing in our professional development is going to be the updates to the requirements for teachers who have our gifted students in their clusters and gifted students outside of our clusters. One of the big things that came forward this year is that we really want to make sure that when we're providing professional development for our teachers, especially surrounding all of our advanced learners, but our gifted students as well, that teachers know who they're looking at, know how do I address those issues, and how to address our students that are there. So we are working on a book study right now, where we're going to review opportunities that are going to strengthen our gifted program. Specifically, we're looking to create information around how to identify gifted learners, how to address the needs of the gifted, the twice exceptional, and the thrice exceptional. Those are the groups that tend to be overlooked a lot. And then how to enrich and support students who are gifted or who might show potential for gifted. So what we don't want is, we don't want teachers to say, well, that kid's really bright, but I'm not really sure. We want them to feel confident saying, like, oh, I think I see something. Here are my steps on what I do next. And our last subcommittee is going to be the committee that really is like the hub of where we are, the increased opportunities for students. Again, we're going to continue with that decoupling, the decoupling you guys talked about and started last year, that we are continuing this year. And then we have extended that down to Metz, and so we are decoupling the Integrated Humanities as well as the Integrated Math and Science Program. And what our goal is really is to, again, allow more students that access. So in doing that, there's really some key pieces that we want to make sure that we included. We don't, we want to make sure that we have communicated criteria and opportunities that are really, really, really clear, that when we are evaluating students for our programs, that it's consistently applied across the board, and that we are giving more students the opportunities to be able to get into our advanced courses. A really good example is we have, this year, we have increased our number of students who are interested in the Governor's School at Innovation Park, and our number of applications have increased. And in one of the meetings that I had with the students as I was working with them, so we've provided them quite a bit of support, one of the students said to me, Ms. West, by the way, I didn't, you know, I was never in IMS. And I said, oh, you don't have to be in IMS to be at Governor's School. And she said, I didn't get in. She is a top candidate. She will probably get in. We, I mean, decisions have not been made, but her information is really, really strong. And so we're missing students like this, who, she told me, I tacked it to my board. I said that this is my dream, and I tacked it to my board, and so I am going to get there. And so she has worked really hard. Those are the students that we don't want to miss. Those are the students that, when we talk about increasing opportunities for kids, those are the students that we want to make sure that we're grabbing and that we're giving those opportunities. We want to make sure that we create multiple systems of measurement and that we apply those consistently across the board, like I mentioned. And so what that's going to do is, that's going to make sure that we are catching all of the students, so every student doesn't fit into a really nice, pretty box. And so we want to make sure that we're looking at the student for who they are, not just their numbers on a piece of paper. We're going to streamline some course offerings, create clearer pathways, so they're able to choose those courses. In addition, we've given quite a bit of guidance and support for our Innovation Park students already this year, and that's going to continue. So in addition to an information session, we've offered several help sessions for students on how to fill out the application and how to work through their presentations and their projects that are going to Governor's School. We have already identified 100 ninth graders that could be eligible next year, and so they are about to get communication from us about what that looks like and how to prepare them. We're looking for opportunities for those students to be able to engage in some of that work. For students who are going to Innovation Park, they have to create a research project or a portfolio, if you will. It can be quite extensive, especially on top of eight periods a day. And so we're looking for some opportunities to open the building for them during the summer so that they're able to come in and use the resources that exist. We do have a couple of teachers who have expressed interest in supporting that work for us and in allowing them resources, right? Because kids can't always have access to those chemicals, but also we want to make sure that they're using chemicals in a safe manner. And so we've kind of worked on some of those things with our students as well. We are going to continue that outreach for Innovation Park down even further. So we're going to push with ninth grade in just a couple of weeks, but we already have plans for our eighth graders and seventh graders to start working on their pathway to Innovation Park, with obviously the goal of increasing our numbers of enrollments, but really increasing our strong candidates. We have a lot of really strong and talented students in our division, and I want to make sure that they're taking advantage of all the opportunities that are available for them. And so the eighth grade and seventh grade students at Metz in the IMS program, we are working on planning a visit for them to go over to Innovation Park, and then for the eighth graders to go back again for the research symposium that exists at the end of the school year. Here is a picture, or a diagram, of our math program, of our math and science program, or IMS program as it exists moving forward. So what you'll see on this slide is that we have decoupled that math and science. So previously, a student had to be in upper-level math in order to take that IMS science. And so what we're saying is, if you love science, it doesn't matter what math you're in, we will get you into the science that you love, and we'll let you play in that IMS science class, if you will. And we're doing that both on the seventh grade and on the eighth grade. When we say seventh grade math, I know the word, the names are different. So seventh grade math refers to a seventh grader taking a seventh grade math class, taking the seventh grade SOL. The eighth grade would be the pre-algebra, right? So Math 8 is a Math 8 pre-algebra naming convention, so I apologize for not having that correct on the slide. And so this, as you'll see, is the decoupling of that. And so what that committee is doing is working on what is the criteria for students to get in and out, and how do we work on that, and how do we make sure that students are accessing this at the biggest, at the greatest capacity? Additionally, you'll see on the next slide that we do the same thing with the Humanities Program or the Integrated Humanities Program. And so students will then, again, get to choose between their English classes, and then they'll be grouped together for their social studies as they choose. And the one big thing to notice is that our research class looks very different than it did before. We are switching to an interdisciplinary research model. So students will have the ability in eighth grade to take So students will have the ability in eighth grade to take a research course, that they will learn all of their research skills in the very beginning and then, um, in the beginning, uh, first semester. And then second semester, they're going to engage in a personal project that they get to choose in whatever modality or whatever way that they want to do that will demonstrate that learning. And that will kind of end with the symposium that used to be at the end of the school year. That's what they will have there. Um, and that's a pretty good shift for us. It runs a little bit, for those of you who are familiar, a little bit like the AP seminar class runs at the high school. So kind of based off of that model. Um, and the one big thing to notice is that the kids that are currently in the seventh grade cohort in both IMS and IH are going to continue to move in that cohort. They're already there. We're not taking away anything that they were already promised or anything that they've already had. We're just shifting for the group that's coming up next. So I want to make sure that families and are really clear on their cohort continues, um, moving forward. The big impact, so we've done a lot and we have a lot of things. What we anticipate is that we're going to see increase in enrollment. We're going to see increase in our programs. We're going to see increase in the type of students we get in, um, in all of our programs. And that enrollment means that we're going to need more teachers or we're, teachers are going to shift. So we're not going to ask for more FTEs in particular, but what they're going to teach might shift a little bit, which is really, really good news. Because right now at the high school level especially, we have so many singleton teachers who are teaching one class or the only teacher, they have no CLT, they don't have any support. And if they don't have anyone who has that content knowledge, that can be a really, really, really lonely feeling. Um, I personally have co-taught with, um, one of the teachers at the high school, um, three or four times this year already because I happen to, that happens to be my AP content. Um, but if I were to be asked to teach in another, like an A B English content, that's, I'm not very helpful there. English is not really my, my love, right? And so being able to have more teachers that are teaching the classes and creating that CLT is really going to be just much better for students all around, along. We're also going to create multiple entries for students. So we're going to allow families to really take control of their learning and decide where they want to go and how they want to get there, how they want to success, how they want to be successful. Um, we really want to make sure that we're eliminating the ambiguity around our programs. There's a lot of ambiguity and a lot of confusion as to what honors means or what integrated honors means or what advanced means or what gifted means. And so we want to eliminate that. When we say Manassas City honors class, we want it to be very, very clear what we mean and what that student is getting from that class. Um, we want to students to be able to have a really good control, but also feel confident when they leave. So when they leave Mets and go on Osborne, or when they leave Osborne and go on to whatever comes next, that they're confident that the work that they did here was really critical and really, um, helpful for their future success. Um, we want to make sure that we are showing those correlations. We know that, that we're going to get that enrollment increase as time goes on. Our advanced course steering committee continues to work. They continue to work. And so I'm going to take this moment to say thank you to all of them. They have been amazing and wonderful. Some of them are sitting in the audience today. Um, not for me, for someone else, but that's okay. Um, and so, but they are great. They've done really good work and they've made, they've asked really tough questions and really challenged me and my profession, but really challenged each other, um, into what we're doing and why are we doing and are we doing what's best for kids? And I think that's really awesome. Our professional learning will result in our staff being very highly qualified and prepared to support the delivery obstruction of all of our students. So when you get a student that might not have been a traditional mold in your class, it's no longer a panic moment. It's a, okay, I know how to deal with this or I know how to get the resources to address and to help this student to be successful. Um, with our gifted and talented class, the, uh, program in general, we're going to see, we are already increasing our identification. And one of the big pieces that we've done with that is we have increased or opened up our, um, our referral period. Previously, there were a couple of weeks in the fall and a couple of weeks in the spring. And if you got it, then great. And if you visited, oh, well. And so now our referral period is open all year. We still will have two evaluation time periods, but if someone wakes up at two in the morning, because I know some people are awake at two in the morning, I am, um, then you can go ahead and refer a child or refer a student to a gifted program and we will look at them when we come around, um, to the evaluation process. Um, we are also working on creating identif- identification documents for all levels. So currently, we can identify students, um, our kindergarten through two, they go to the STAR program and then two through six. We don't have any way of identifying students after that. And so if you are a gifted learner after that, great, right? And so we have, we have changed that. We're working on identifying those things. But most importantly, starting next year, we will offer direct gifted services to every identified gifted student in second grade through 12th grade. And of course, in K through two, we are going to continue with our STAR program. So that is a huge change, um, that we are really excited about. Um, and then our last big piece, of course, the Innovation Park piece, and we talked about that strong vertical articulation and the vertical alignment. We are anticipating an increase in our application pool. Um, we're, we're anticipating an increase in the strength of candidates that we're getting so that we are getting candidates who feel like they are prepared and that also, once they get there or once they are offered a seat, that they accept their seat and they stay in that seat. So we, that is a big piece that we want to make sure that our kids feel successful and that they feel like they belong when they go into the world. So, thank you guys for your time this evening. That is my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Westphalhoff. That's, uh, a great presentation. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. You really did a fantastic job and you explained and, uh, answered a lot of my questions I had already. Um, I do, I, I, I understand the, the real benefit of, of having more individual coursework is it is a little bit easier to assess the students. Um, so you can really make, uh, good decisions on what, what students' talents really are depending on the course. Um, one of the real benefits of the integration is, um, truly integrating math and science in the, in real-world applications. And, but I see that you, you, you put, spent a lot of time already talking about supporting the students who are going to Governor's School. So, um, will that be part of the supports?
Yes. So I think integrations in content is really just good teaching, right? And so, yes, my, the goal is as that curriculum development committee goes and starts to create the new curriculum documents, that is part of it. They are going to include that integration and regardless of what math level you are in, in sixth or seventh and eighth grade, there will be the integration and being able across the board with both the math, science, as well as the humanities pieces. So I don't anticipate that going away. That is not a, a goal to take that away. That's a really strong key piece that we all should be doing in all of our classes. And so I definitely don't want to lose that.
And it sounds like you got a lot of input, input from Governor's School already. So, so, um, I appreciate that you shared that. Um, you just, uh, know more than 26 kids for this next school year. That's, well, that's what we budgeted for at the Governor's School.
Okay. My goal is, my goal is not to sell seats. And so we'll start there and then we'll worry about your 26 seats.
I hope to see that number increase.
I do too.
So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And we have a question from our student representative, Ms. Island.
Hello. I loved your presentation today, but I also had a question for you kind of pertaining to, um, when students, I know back when I, when I was over at Mets, you would have to kind of like take a test, maybe in intermediate school to get into the IMS program. And if you were kind of like declined entry, you would kind of just stay in your, um, like proposed already, you know, like your set courses. Um, when it comes to the new system right now, are students still required to take that kind of test to make sure that they are fit for these IMS courses when it comes to these science and these math courses?
So we are, we are developing our criteria currently. So the committee that is in charge of programming is going to work on that and what that criteria looks like. What we want is to not have one measure of how our students are assessed. So we don't want that test to be the end-all, be-all if you're showing potential in other areas. And so we're looking for a multi-point process for evaluating students who are ready for that program.
I'm going to add another question.
Sure.
Um, when it comes to like the GS and IP program, like the Governor's School, I do know that there was a bit of a disconnect between, like in the past years, between what's being taught, um, for like the IMS students and for what's happening over at Governor's School. So I know you mentioned that some, um, teachers went over there and they visited. Could that be like a bi-annual thing potentially in the future? So, um, teachers know like, oh, these students need to be taught theoretical problems maybe for the IMS physics or things like that?
Absolutely. So that is our plan to move forward, is that we will do that every year with our teachers. Um, and I don't know if I mentioned it in my presentation, I don't remember, um, but our, one of our neighboring divisions is actually going to do the same thing as well. Um, and so we think that it, it was really powerful. It was something that we were just, Dr. Small and I were sitting around talking about, what if this, what if that? Um, and it, it yielded far more results than we thought we would. So we absolutely intend to continue that practice.
And then I have just one last question.
You can ask as many questions as you like.
Thank you. Um, I know that when it came to IMS students joining Governor's School, it was kind of like a not, like a not a great rate when it came to students actually applying for the Governor's School because some students were already just so burnt out from the program itself. Do you think that kind of just separating the courses will offer students like a bit more of a chance to say, oh, yes, I really do enjoy math and I do want to continue down this route in the future?
I don't, I hadn't thought about that question. So I'm not a hundred percent sure. I would hope that by giving students a choice in what they want to do, that will give them some, some flexibility and less burnout, right? So when we talk, let's talk big, big advanced program numbers, right? So College Board says that when you take, you know, after five classes, that the diminishing results, right? Like you'd get the same. And so what we ask and what College Board always suggests is that students take classes in the courses where they're most passionate about. And so that's really what we're doing. We're trying to provide students classes and the classes, the pathways to take the classes where they are the most passionate. And so I'm hoping that by, we know that by decoupling, that they will be able to spend more time engaging in the classes that they really love. And so hopefully, well, they want to continue to pursue that at the Governor's School or at other places as well, right? So we have Governor's School, but we also have the summer residential Governor's Schools programs where we send students as well. So we have a couple of different avenues. So, great question.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you for your presentation tonight.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Ball?
So I just wanted to thank you for this move from what has traditionally been a little bit of an exclusive program and a little bit confusing program to much more, you know, equitable and inclusive process and opportunity. Um, I just want to say that I love your Shadow Day idea. Um, I think anytime you can see where you're headed as a teacher or a student, really, um, you know, it's, it's just helpful. So I, I commend you for coming up with that and making it happen. And the more often it can happen, the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Prescher?
Thank you for, sorry. Thank you for the presentation. Um, I had a lot of questions. Now I have fewer questions. Um, but first I want to note that for anybody, you went, you mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this is an ongoing process. Anybody who is curious about what we had talked about before, you look at the January 24th, 2023 school board meeting and you will see the presentation, go to YouTube and you can watch the meeting there. So anybody who wants to put all the pieces together, I wanted to make sure that got out there.
Thank you.
Um, so my goal, my goal with these questions is just to make sure we are hitting the right balance, uh, between our goals of expanding our opportunity while maintaining that high level of academic rigor. Because I, I actually agree that we are a little too restrictive, but we don't want to over-correct and then end up non, not differentiating our coursework. Because, yeah, there is a reason we differentiate coursework and students really stand, stand to benefit from that. So we want to make sure that we're hitting that balance.
Mm-hmm.
So when we, so speaking of last year, um, we started implementing some of these decoupling changes at Osborne. Were those changes successful?
So the data is pretty early right now. So what we would look at is we're going to look at course enrollment and we're going to look at success in those classes. We just don't have that data available right now. What we know is that we have about 30% of students enrolled in classes at Osborne in advanced courses, and that is a positive trend, but it's lower than our neighboring divisions and much lower than what we want to see.
Right. And much lower than what our students are actually capable of, which is the important piece of this.
Yes.
Um, so my question is, I understand that, you know, going back to Jan- January 24th, 2023, there was this whole cohort model, we're going to roll this out, ninth grade, 10th grade, class of 2024, 2025, 2026, 27, yada, yada, yada. Um, but, and I understand that obviously we're not going to have the performance data from this year, but I don't under, I, help me understand why we are proceeding with changes at Mets until we've seen how the changes at Osborne roll out.
So the plan is to roll out and decouple the classes. So I don't anticipate that there's going to be negative impact from the rollout of the changes. And I don't, the way that I understand it is that it wasn't really a, if this is successful, then this. It is, this is what we're doing across the board.
I see. Um, and when you were listing the metrics that we were measuring the success of the decoupling, uh, data reviewed, I made a little list, number of courses, types of courses, number of students, but I noticed that performance data wasn't included in that. Was there a reason that performance data was not included in that?
We don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet, okay. So what percent of kids are, what percent of the Met student body is currently in IMS?
We have, um, nine, 91? 91? Yep, 91 students currently in the IMS program at Mets.
And that is not inclusive by IH, that's just the IMS students.
Correct. Uh, IH is at 87.
Um, and these are overlapping students or they're two separate groups of students?
Uh, we have three students that overlap.
Okay. Um, so I was listening to your description of, you know, where that choke point is, you know, you told the story about the young woman who's applying to Governor's School, but was not accepted into the IMS program. I definitely agree that's a problem, but it seems like the more obvious solution would be to address the entrance criteria to IMS at the sixth grade level. So what is happening at the sixth grade level that qualified kids are not getting into the program as it currently exists?
So we're doing both. So what, right now, what we have is we have a system of evaluation that is inconsistently applied, but also is very unclear for our families. And so our programming committee is working on that. So defining the criteria for entrance as well as, um, really defining clearly what that looks like, but also using multiple avenues or multiple points of data versus just an exam.
So why, why not do that and then explore decoupling?
I'm going to go back to my previous answer and that is already disheartened that this is the way that we are going to go. And so it's not really a one or the other, it is a both. And truly, decoupling is what's best for kids, right? So we can continue to keep our classes coupled, but we will, as long as our classes are coupled and we're forcing students to take classes the way that they are joined together, we will always keep out a big subset of our students.
Right. I mean, I completely understand for the IH level, you're going to have kids who are willing and excited to engage with primary history texts in a way that they're not excited to engage with fictional texts.
Correct.
You know, and why would you make these kids do the same thing if that's not what's inspiring to them? But math and science are in slightly different category in that they do, you know, travel together. If you don't have an algebraic background, you're going to have a hard time in chemistry. If you don't have calculus, you're not going to succeed in physics. So. So.
Both our math and our science coordinators are on the, are on the committee, and they have, we've, we've talked extensively about this and the need for what level of math. So looking at our neighboring divisions, they also honors, offer honors classes and they are not coupled or tied to those math classes. So even students who are in like 10th grade chemistry just need like pre-algebra or basic algebra. So there's a disconnect between requiring kids to take geometry to take physical science.
I mean, I can, I, yes, I can see that. And one of the proposals, it's my understanding that one of the proposals that had been floated but didn't make it into this set of recommendations was creating an honors science system under the general science program and leaving IMS as it is. So what is the reasoning behind not doing that?
That information did not come to you in the way in which it was presented.
Can I speak to that for a minute? I would say that if you really look at the practices across our region, all right, the way we set up middle school, the way we set up middle school advanced courses is we have the standard curriculum. And then we have the advanced, and some, they are different names for it. Sometimes it's called honors, sometimes it's called integrated, sometimes it's called extended. Where I came from, they called it the extended curriculum. But because we have a base set of standards, and then from that, those standards, we then move into the realm of more advanced study in different ways. What makes the most sense from the perspective of delivering instruction effectively is to have the standard curriculum and the advanced curriculum. To try to create a partially advanced curriculum, like a third carve out, tends not to work very well from an instructional perspective. And it also tends not to work very well from the perspective of program placement and placing kids in classes that work best for their needs. And so that, that's why an option like that, while I think well intentioned, is not something that's going to get us where we want to go with these program changes.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of, speaking of, one of the other questions I had was, was any research considered as part of this committee process?
In terms of?
How we're doing our IMS and IH.
So not, we haven't like pulled studies if that's what you're asking?
So I do have an additional concern that the current data that we have out of Metz Middle School regarding how effective our Math 7 and 8 programs are going, you know, the current data that we have does not indicate a high degree of success in Math 7 and Math 8, which does make me worried about kids going from Math 7 into an IMS science level class. Can you speak to that?
I don't think that we're trying to do them separately, right? Our goal is to consistent, to, we can, a rising tide raises all boats, right? So we're trying to raise our science and math scores as well as increase those opportunities. I don't have the data on the math scores, in particular, the science scores in particular, so I can't speak specifically to that, but that, we're not doing them mutually exclusively.
Okay, so we are to expect this time next year when we see, when all of this, I guess in two years, we would see the data from this, that we would see our Math 7 and 8 majorly increasing as well as enhanced performance and, that's a basketball game for anybody who's alarmed, that we would see this rising tide in our general offerings, Math 7 and 8.
I would anticipate that.
While continuing to have a rigorous program offered at the science level.
I would anticipate that, yes.
All right. I will still be here in two years, so we'll see.
I will too.
You know, I, I would like you to speak a little bit more, so we're called, we're still calling it integrated science.
Integrated math-science.
Yes. But if there's different levels of math in the science program, how, how do you, how do you effectively integrate that with, especially if you have kids in there who are taking, you know, who are, who are familiar with the point-slope formula and are capable of doing that for you when you give them a graph of photosynthesis or whatever versus kids who haven't had that math instruction yet? I'm just worried logistically about how to bring these things together.
Yeah, so our content curriculum team is going to be the ones that are going to work on that. They're going to be the ones that are going to be the expert in how to integrate, but integration of contents across boards is a really common practice in education, and we should be doing it anyway. That's why I mentioned earlier about like, it's really just really best practices, and so we're putting it on paper. What we're doing is we're taking those best practices and codifying them into a clear, concise curriculum documents that will match. So if we were to have three different levels of students in the same class, they are still able to learn and access that curriculum, but how they access that might look different. So let's take an example from like an English language learner class, right? So students in English language learners, if an English language learner is in a standard class, we might provide them different sentence stems than we would as another student. And so similar type of scaffolds would exist in that class. And so, and there's been extensive work around inclusive practices in this division. And so teachers should be fairly well-versed or if not yet, have the resources in order to make those changes or to make those adjustments for students who are in their classes and at different levels.
All right. I mean, like I said, my goal, we are, we're going back and forth, we're getting a good discussion going. Our goals are actually the same. I actually, you know, do, I want to reiterate that, agree that we have, it's greater than 9% of kids at Metz Middle School that are capable of high level coursework. I just want to really make sure that the trajectory is up, up, up.
Yep.
And not that the rigorous coursework starts to creep.
My goal is never to lower rigor, it's to start at the highest level and then scaffold for students as necessary. So we, I'm not, I don't believe in quote unquote dumbing down the material or dumbing down the curriculum. Like kids, our students are capable, like, like you mentioned, they are capable of reaching that, but we're not giving them the opportunity even to walk through the door. So what I'm doing is I'm opening the door and allowing them to walk through.
All right. I will, I will look forward to seeing how this goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation. This has been a long, ongoing conversation that did start last January because there were, there was some ambiguity in what was going on. I just have, have a few questions. When we talk about uncoupling our coursework, what do the other school divisions around us do? Are they coupled or are they not coupled?
They're not coupled.
Has that, do you, and you may not know, do you know if they ever were coupled? Or is this something that was unique to the city?
It's, so in my previous role, the last time I did this similar work in a previous, in a neighboring division, and the last time the classes were coupled in that division was in the, when I graduated high school, 1998? And so shortly after that is when they started to decouple and to streamline the number, the levels. So that's one of your neighboring big divisions. As far as the other one, I'm not, I don't have that data.
But basically, the other school divisions surrounding us do not have coupled courses, and those students have been successful.
Correct. And some of our neighboring divisions do have math and science programs where they do not require students to have high level math and high level science, in order to access the high level science.
Okay. And then, um, now when you've got, when you're working with seventh and eighth graders specifically, and you're talking about the classes they need, those IMS students, what kind of guidance are you providing those students as to what to choose to take? Because my brain is telling me that you're going to, those kiddos are going to need more guidance in identifying which classes are more appropriate for them. Is there kind of like in high school where there's a lot of conversation between counselor and student about what's appropriate? Are we expecting that? Are we planning for that?
We're planning for that. So we haven't done any of that work just yet. So part of it is we wanted to know what the criteria was so we can start talking. But the goal is, one, to send out a lot of communication. We know that one of the areas where we really need to work on is communication for families. We don't want families to be confused or to wonder where to go. And even though we're opening these opportunities, if we don't tell them what those opportunities are, it doesn't matter that the door is open, right? And so we are working on that and on that communication piece. The four committees that we mentioned all work together, but one of those committees as their subcommittee, that is their job to talk about and to determine like what communication needs to go out, who it needs to go out to, how it needs to go out, how often it should go out, and then creating a, a long-term plan for what that looks like.
Now, when we talk about our IMS students, those students who are in the more advanced math classes, like let's look at our eighth graders, Math 8, Algebra 1, Geometry. If they're in that more advanced math, can they take Science 8? Or should they take that integrated, that IMS science?
They can choose.
So because we keep talking about students who were in the IMS science but who are taking the lower level math, and I'm just wondering about the flip side.
Yes, so they can choose. So that's the, that's the, the joy of it, right? Wherever you sit, you can choose whatever you want. It's like, pick your own, pick your own ending.
So for the layperson, which I kind of think a majority of us are, what are the differences between Science 8 and IMS science?
So what we're going to do with the, so our IMS science curriculum is not yet written. So I'm going to be clear about that. So what we're going to do is we're going to take pieces of that research course that currently exists, and we're going to integrate it into that, that eighth grade science class to create an IMS science class. So we're going to include a lot of additional hands-on activities, but our goal is really to differentiate between a standard class and an IMS class. And that's really across the board, between a standard class and an honors class, what makes it different. And so we're going to look at some of the key pieces that have already been integrated in the IMS classes and specifically in the IMS research class to make sure that students have access to those opportunities.
Okay, great. And then if we can talk just for a minute about the steering committee. Now, you said the steering committee, and I want to make sure that I'm correct in this, that you're always open to new members.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so anyone who's interested, who feels that their voice needs to be heard, can share their voice by joining the steering committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's open to all concerned parties. And you have members from central office, administrative at school, teachers, parents, do you have student input in the steering committee?
We've asked for students, but we haven't gotten any to show up. So students, if you want to come on, we're ready.
So that, that sounds like a great opportunity for students, because I'm someone who's really big on making sure we have the voice of our students, because they're the people who are most impacted by this. And then I guess one last little question. And I know you said you can't really quote any studies, but does the general research and understanding behind uncoupling, this is what is guiding our actions? This, these aren't actions that are just being taken out of the blue.
Correct.
And, and what, I'm trying to figure out the best way to explain this or ask this question. Are we basing these decisions on, and I, I may not be able to ask this question properly, so I may have to scrap this question. Our actions are being based on a recognition that we have students who are exceptional learners who are not being identified because they don't qualify in math and science, because they're really gifted in science or in math, and we're losing those students.
Correct.
And I'm assuming that our goal is to make sure we pull those students in and provide them with what they need to be successful, because the potential is that we can lose them when we get to high school.
Correct.
And so that's really our guiding force behind this.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. So, and then, and I'm sorry to keep asking questions, I'm really sorry, but my brain sometimes goes like this.
Ask away.
One thing leads to another. So you're talking about our twice exceptional students and our thrice exceptional students. We know that among all testing for our kiddos, that it's based on a very specific population, that the individuals who are tested, that we compare all our scores to are a very specific population of students. How do we do this? How do we identify our thrice exceptional students who are not just gifted, but are English language learners and students with disabilities?
Yeah, so that's part of the, the professional development that we're going to push out to, to our teachers. So really, there's a lot of indicators that we can see. So I'm going to use our English language learners as example because they're almost the easiest to understand. So when we see a student who's a, maybe a newcomer to the country and is picking up language at an exceptionally fast speed, that's often an indicator. Not always a 100%, right? But that's a good indicator. We also use the Naglieri test as our, one of our screeners, and it's a non-verbal test. And the instructions, I believe, also come in Spanish. I think if you're in another language other than Spanish, then I don't think that's an option. But those are two like areas. And so what we're looking for, what we hope to provide, is teachers with kind of a, a checklist isn't a good answer, but like a, for lack of a better word, but if I see this, this, and this, this student may be, or this student is ringing some bells in my head, let me get help. And so then our gifted teachers would then go in and be able to support that teacher and support that student on a dip, on a deeper level. So we, there's lots of measures on how to find and identify twice and thrice exceptional. There's a lot of research out of William &amp; Mary on, on students that fit into those categories. And so as part of our book study, that is some of the work that we're doing.
Okay, that's great, because I think that, and you know, it's interesting, but just last year, we had a student here who was an IMS student, who I believe originally was not originally identified because he didn't match that old criteria. And he was the state winner for, I think it was a social studies competition. And I think that's a perfect example of how when we open up and we, we cast a wider net and we use a broader lens to look at our students, we're more successful, and that student's trajectory has completely changed. So I think that's an example. And so you're going to keep us updated.
Absolutely.
As how things go. And once we have data points, you're going to share with us data points to see how we're going and what we're doing, and to hopefully see more of our students entering the gifted program and more of our students applying to GovSchool. And all those pieces will be shared with us on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Correct? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westphalhoff, and thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Next up on our agenda with Student Services, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force update. Dr. Shavise Thomas, Executive Director of Student Services, will provide an update on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, current and future work.
Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, school board members, and Dr. Newman. Good evening. I'm Gina Bellamy, the Director of Student Health Services. I'm just happy to present to the board on something that is not COVID, contact tracing, or transmission rates. I'm real happy. Okay. Tonight, I speak to you as a member of the Equity Task Force, which is led by the Executive Director for Student Services, Dr. Thomas. We thank you tonight for giving us an opportunity to provide an update on the work that we've done as a task force group. We're excited to present to you tonight. We will be presenting as a team. I think I'm supposed to have a slide. Okay, there we go. So tonight, we will, we will be presenting as a team. Anyway, oh, there we go. Okay, so this slide lists the members of our team in its entirety. Would the members of the team that are in-house please stand? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us while we figure out our, all right, it's not just, all right. So obviously, as a task force on diversity, equity, and inclusion, we are grounding our work in the incredible, unique, and diverse population here in Manassas. And in order to do so, we continually come back, thank you, Brandon, to all of the ways in which our population is diverse. Here's the fast facts from, you know, the website, but that's not the only ways in which we are diverse. We've just heard about our gifted programs and our twice exceptional and thrice exceptional students and all of the ways that we bring such a diverse community together.
So I'll be talking about our task force responsibilities. I've been on the task force since it originated in 2020, and I'm excited to continue that work, especially as a 24-year veteran in Manassas City. So I continue to invest in students. So under the leadership of the Executive Director of Student Services, this task force will partner with principals, leadership teams, and central office leaders to achieve the following goals: provide support to schools and central office staff with equitable educational opportunities to develop students, to demonstrate critical thinking, cultural awareness, and empathy necessary for global citizenship, inform the professional practices of faculty and staff to ensure each student has access to equitable education, and to ensure that the climate is inclusive and respectful to all students.
I'm Lee Hudek. And we're going to talk about the mission today. As champions for all students, the leaders of the DEI task force have a duty and obligation to empower each student and staff member to embody the MCPs mission that each student will, will reach their fullest potential in a system that removes barriers and creates boundless opportunities through robust policies that account for the needs of every student. Our vision is to evaluate and update existing policies and practices to ensure all students and staff at Manassas City Public Schools are provided with a sense of belonging and fairness by implementing equitable and inclusive practices.
Hello, I am Brandon Fincham. And of course, what is a presentation without a good quote? So we have diversity is having a seat at the table, inclusion is having a voice, and belonging is having that voice be heard. When we first started meeting together, we looked at several videos about diversity, equity, inclusion across the country, especially in schools in California, New York, and things like that. And one of the things that stood out to us when we talk about diversity, and we talk about equity, and we talk about inclusion, is that at the end of the day, what we're all searching for is that sense of belonging, that sense of having your voice be heard. Likewise, when we're talking about diversity, it's not a box to check. It is a reality that we should, that should be deeply felt and held and valued by all of us. So this isn't something that we're looking at just to check a box and say, listen, we've done it, we've looked at it. We want to actually take this work and put it into action and make it applicable for our students and for our staff. A lot of us have seen part of this picture where we see the reality, we see that, we see people trying to see over a fence to look at a baseball game, assuming that's baseball, I am not a sports person. And then we have people who have a great view, they're up nice and high, we have a box so that someone can see, and then we have someone down below the level, they have no chance of seeing the game, they have no access to it. Then we look at equality, and we've given all three of these individuals the same box. Two of the individuals can see, even with that equality, one of the individuals is still left out. They're still not able to access that. Then we look at equity. We have a person who can see this whole time, they're tall enough, we have one on two, one box, we have one on two boxes. At this point, all three of these individuals can see. Most of us would consider this is the goal, this is what we want. So we want everyone to be able to, to participate. At this point, all three of these individuals can see. Most of us would consider this is the goal. This is what we want. So we want everyone to be able to participate. We want to take that a step further, and we want to look at liberation. We want to remove the barrier altogether. Yes, we can scaffold, yes, we can differentiate, yes, we can provide services, but at the end of the day, we're about removing barriers.
And I realized I didn't introduce myself the first time. I'm Sarah Burkhead. And so in order to accomplish that, to begin to look at the barriers and how they come down, each, we divided into three subcommittees. Each subcommittee evaluated the current state of diversity, equity, and inclusion in Manassas City Public Schools by reviewing our district policies, practices, and the data at both our division level and school levels to determine the elements that we have of a cohesive equity plan already in place, things that are in progress, and things that aren't yet started or even present. Subcommittee One, which is the subcommittee that I am working on, focused on reviewing our positions and practices around data, around intentional engagement with equity actions, and around the status of how we communicate and monitor our MCPS equity goals.
Me again. I represent Group Two. We looked at identifying inequalities. This is at disciplinary level to see if certain students were expelled at a higher rate than others, looking at that data. We also looked at the data for how advanced courses, how advanced course programming worked for our for our ESOL students, students with disabilities, things like that. We looked at the anti-racism policy that is a part of our Board Docs Policy ACC. We looked at the Student Code of Conduct to see how our Student Code of Conduct and the policies in our Board Docs align with each other to make sure that it is cohesive, and to make sure that our Student Code of Conduct does not provide unjust policies or unjust skewing towards one race, towards one gender, one sex, or anything like that.
I forgot to introduce myself, too. I'm Dr. Karen Wallace. And so my group had resource allocation, family engagement, and student engagement. So one of the things we talked about is access to extracurricular activities. Do all students have access? And are schools supporting this? Family engagement, we talked about our family engagement programs as they are, and I think we're doing a good job with that with the Peps. And we also talked about, do we have translators? Do we have, do all families have access to school? Student engagement, are all students provided resources that they need so that they can be successful in their classes?
So I'm Tammy Potts. As the subcommittees met, one of the things we wanted to do is honor the work that's already been done. So we talked about things that are already in place. So some of the things we found, we do have an equity policy and an anti-racism policy. These are easily found online, and that was one of our criteria. If it wasn't publicized well, is it still out there? Can anybody find it if they're looking for it? And those that are in place. We looked at the strategic plan, and it does support equity, and it is publicly available. I mean, it's easy to find on the website. Then we looked at gifted enrollments. Interesting that we're having this discussion again. Are they being monitored for disproportionate representation? So yes, they are. We're looking at those gifted enrollments. And then we also have a formalized investigation process for whenever families or students report discrimination, that process is in place. It's already formalized. And our school emblems and mascots are free from racial and ethnic bias. So those things are all in place. I have another slide of things that we have in place. We've got some good things going on. Students are not excluded from extracurricular activities based on race or ethnicity or anything else. And our Student Code of Conduct does include an equity statement and doesn't have language that categorizes racial justice movements as racist, hate speech, or controversial. And we have interpreters and/or translators in varied languages through multiple, multiple means. Language line translators, family liaison, we have other staff members who are also able to translate when we need them. And MCPS prioritizes outreach through family and student engagement plans, and we've seen a lot of that work done by our family liaisons. So we've got a lot of great things in place.
Looking at our current work, so these are things that we're trying to accomplish between now and the end of the school year. So we have an anti-racist statement in our, or an anti-racist policy in our Board Docs. We have our anti-racist proclamation. We want to include an anti-racist statement in our Student Code of Conduct as well, so that they can mirror each other. We also want to include language that explicitly prohibits the wearing of hateful clothing. So this would be clothing that attributes it to any hate groups or anything like that, anything that's going to make, that's going to make other students or staff feel marginalized.
Hi, guys. I'm Trish Famosi. To move the work of our task force forward, we felt it was important to identify areas where we could make immediate progress. Part of that includes data analysis to focus on the equity gaps and barriers that currently exist and the successes that we have already had, that you already heard. Additionally, to help our creation and implementation of an equity plan, we have begun to align the equity actions with the MCPS strategic plan, which includes celebrating the work of our amazing family liaisons and strengthening our family engagement strategies as a whole. Additional work around creating and implementing an equity plan includes analyzing our school board policies and proclamations to make sure that we have a common understanding of the goals and outcomes laid out for us. Some examples of areas that we are working to understand included defining a safe and innovative environment and operationalizing statements like success for all using our MCPS strategic plan and our research into equity practices.
I just assumed the next slide was me. Okay, so we're also looking at research into professional development options, or opportunities for our staff for anti-racism, as well as culturally competencies for all of our staff, just so that we can make sure that the people who are facing our students know how to deal and know how to best communicate with all of our students, all of the diverse students that we have. We're also looking at branding. We came up with this equity and excellence for all, which the lovely Ms. Connors, our commercial photography teacher at Osborne High School, designed for us. I gave her a quick little idea, and she mocked it up in like a matter of minutes, and then we put them on these shirts. We think it's important that we have branding. We want this equity and excellence for all to be something that's forward-facing. So when we see this, we know that this is what our district is about.
So now we need to look at where we're going next year. So these are our goals for the next school year: To ensure an innovative learning environment for all students, to recruit, hire, develop, and retain qualified racially, linguistically, and culturally responsive personnel who will more accurately reflect the student population we serve, professional development, provide annual and ongoing anti-bias and multicultural PD. We thought that was very important because usually we do maybe one or two professional developments on cultural competence, and then we move on. So we feel like it needs to be consistent, and it should be across the board. Well, and other things that we are doing in the 2024-25 school year: Reviewing existing policies, programs, PD, and procedures to ensure racial equity, tracking and reported disaggregated data sets, and determining student representation and success, and empowering, welcome, and empower families of all races, economic status, ethnicities, religions, cultures, and languages as essential partners.
Diversity is our strength. All students are our students, and equity is our path to sustainable excellence. As students have big dreams, unfortunately, unfortunately, some face a very difficult and challenging road to get there. Obstacles and barriers get in the way, as this is the heart of educational equity. Therefore, how can we do everything we can to meet our students where they are? The bottom line is, how can we give those who need it and truly understand that belonging and equity are connected? Culturally responsive teaching is not just checking a box for required training, but understanding that students are people, and without teaching them, teaching them without building relationships is challenging. So how do we capitalize on what we bring, what students bring from home, their personal lives, and allow us to get to know them to meet their needs? There should be no blank slates coming into our classrooms. How do we respond to each student who walks through our doors? We hope to see continued evidence of authentic relationships, belonging, and opportunities for students, student voice as indicators of culturally responsive classrooms. Do all our students feel safe in their learning environment and have a strong sense of connection in the classroom and the school community? Thus, as a task force, we are compiling a list of questions and areas that require robust discussion and deep reflection from more stakeholders to guide our future meetings. We will continue to gather evidence and examine practices and procedures that impact our student outcomes using our equity and anti-racism policies, our strategic plan, core beliefs to guide, and core beliefs to guide our work. Under access and opportunities, an example question to continue our work will be, do we have instructional strategies to support differentiation? Our disciplinary practices, when we look at our disciplinary practices, some of our questions are, how can we access positive, how can we assess positive relationships and positive, and a positive sense of community within our schools? Is PBIS fully implemented with consistent expectations among all schools? And are there support strategies and resources in place to be proactive in reducing negative behaviors? How can we enhance and expand our social-emotional instruction? And how can we introduce and provide research-based evidence on restorative practices, practice training in our secondary schools, such as restorative circles and conferences and conflict resolution? How can we engage our stakeholders? We want to create focus groups with diverse perspectives, provide parent support materials in multiple languages. Our policy and our practices. Review ongoing work of other school divisions. Acknowledge implicit bias and embed cultural competence goals and training. Increase communication of stakeholders about our work. And on the professional development, should cultural competency training be required for all staff? And then should we train, and how do we train all staff on trauma-informed care? This is our quote guy.
So to round out our presentation, we have a quote from Jane Goodall. Every individual matters. Every individual has a role to play, and every individual makes a difference. This is something that I think we all here in Manassas City Public Schools hold near and dear to our hearts, and we are here for all of our students. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments from the board, Mrs. Brooks?
I don't really have any questions for you. I just want to thank you all for your, all your hard work that you're putting into this. Okay, I do have a question. How do I get one of those shirts? No, thank you all very much for making sure that all of our students are taken care of and capitalizing ALL for all of them.
Questions or comments?
Well, you know, I'll just comment only, no questions. First of all, quote guy, that last quote, I love it. I love it. And I just want to thank all of you for your hard work, and I'm glad, I'm glad the proclamation, we're continuing this process. This is always a continuing battle, always. So I want to thank you all for your work. And I really enjoyed hearing from each of you, instead of just one of you. That was nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Anyone else? Mrs. Spall?
Hi, I just remember four years ago, we were in the throes of COVID and watching some very unfortunate things unfold in the greater community. George Floyd being the first one that I remember, and just speaking with Chair Seberg, who wasn't a chair, and I wasn't on school board at the time, but saying, we have to do something about a task force for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I'm happy to see, four years later, you know, all the progress that you've made. I'm very proud of the progress that you've made. I'm curious to see how we're going to measure up with our policies and our student handbook, so I'm always available to talk if if there's any issues there, or we look forward to your recommendations. And I second, if your T-shirts are for sale, I'd be happy to know that.
Anyone else? Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you. When you all walked up with a piece of paper, I was kind of thinking you were going to do your interpretive dance. So in some ways, I'm oddly disappointed, but that's okay. You know, it's great to see all the progress that has been made since this committee first was formed. And when COVID hit, it really kind of felt like the committee had fallen apart for a while because we had so much, we were dealing with crisis. So it's great to see that the work has been ongoing, and it's interesting because this evening, we are voting on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion proclamation. So it's great that you're here, because right now, you are the experts in the room, and thank you for all the hard work you've done and continue to do. And like what everyone else said, the T-shirts are great. Do they have anything on the back? Okay, very nice. Below that, could you put MCPS? We have to identify the school division that we belong to, and of course, I'm sure everybody up here would want one of those shirts. So thank you for the hard work you're doing and you continue to do. And as the chair of the policy committee, I have a feeling I'll be hearing from somebody on your committee. So thank you.
Thank you all. What a team. It was really nice to hear from a team. Thank you for doing that. And it's just very timely, like it's been mentioned, we have our Equity and Education proclamation coming up soon, and we'll be working with academic committee on code of conduct soon. So this is all very timely and appreciated so much. Thank you very much. And before we go on to our next agenda item, I do want to recognize that Manassas Education Association is represented in the audience with leadership, President Anna DiMaria, we have Ms. Tammy Potts, Brandon Fincham, and Jenny Higginbotham. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Our next presentation is for personnel. We have proposed 2425 health insurance premiums presented by Billy K. Wingfield and Ms. Megan Mills. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, Megan Mills, our benefits administrator, is going to provide information about the proposed health insurance plans for school year 2425.
Good evening. I am going to review some information on the proposed rates for the health premiums for 2425. So we received the renewal from the local choice who provides our health plans, and this year, with the renewal rates, the Anthem monthly premium saw a 10.6% increase, while our Kaiser monthly premium saw a 2% decrease. So what we've got here for you is the last five years, where you can compare Anthem to Kaiser. And you can see Anthem for the last five years had 0%, 0%, 3%, 0%, and 4.7%. And then Kaiser had 8%, 8%, 0%, 8.2%, and then 0%. In the last few years, we've done two RFPs just to make sure that we are still offering the best plan and getting the best rates that we can for our employees. We work with a company called USI Consultants, so we are in agreement that we would like to do another RFP next year just to continue to maintain and know that we are comparable with other things that are out there and offering the best thing for our employees. To find the employer premium, we do something called premium averaging. And this allows us to offer one premium per tier rather than multiple for every tier. And the way this is done is you take the comprehensive plans plus the Kaiser, and you exclude the high deductible, and then you find the average for each tier. So we have three tiers. The first tier is just an employee. The second tier is an employee plus one dependent, and then the third tier is the family. So then, once we get that average, it's been calculated, then we apply that to each tier level. We, there are several rules and regulations that we have to follow with TLC, so we do follow all the TLC calculation rules and meet or exceed the TLC required minimum employer contributions. And this year, we are doing 83% for the employee only, 73% for the employee plus one dependent, and then 73% plus one dependent, and then 73% for family. And this is 3% more per tier than we've done in the past, and this is to try to help with that increase for insurance cost. So here is the proposed rates. The top section is your full monthly premium. Your middle section is what the employer would be contributing every month, and the bottom is the monthly employee contribution per month. There were a couple of plan changes with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They had a Virginia-mandated hearing aid benefit for children, and the IRS had a mandate which increased the high-deductible health plan amounts with single and family. The Future Moms Program has actually changed names, and it's now being called Building Healthy Families. And then they are going to have virtual physical therapy through Live Health Online using Sword Health. And then Kaiser, they changed dental vendors. They went from Dominion Dental to Liberty Dental, and that was effective January 1st. The standalone plans that we also offer, one is Vision and one is Delta. The Delta Plan saw a 3% increase, which is in line with what we've seen the past several years. And then VSP had a 0% increase because we have our rates guaranteed through July 1st of 2025. That's all I have.
Any que, I know we've seen this information before at our work session. Is there any questions or comments from the board on this?
I have a comment. This seems like such a short presentation. There's really not a whole lot of questions we could ask. My husband, same, same increase. But the work that is done behind the scenes with your team, I am sure is extensive. So I want to thank you very much for presenting, and know that the work has not gone unnoticed. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. You know, when we had our work session, and you talked about how Anthem had gone up 10%, and then when you showed us the slide tonight that showed the changes over the last five years, although Kaiser went down, is going down 2%, there was a much higher increase over the five year. It was 24.2%, whereas Anthem-
7.7.
Was 7.7. And so even if you calculate into next year, Kaiser has, the cost for Kaiser has gone, still gone up more than for Anthem. I mean, it's frustrating that Anthem has gone up 10%.
Yeah.
I'm going to be honest.
Essentially, now, it's much more balanced.
Yes.
You know, I mean, 7.7 to 24.2 is really off, off balance.
Yeah.
But now it's a little bit more balanced.
But we are, you're going to do the RFP-
Mm-hmm.
To compare insurance plans, to see if we can get a better deal for the 2526 school year?
Yes.
Okay. So we are looking at it, we're not just saying-
Oh, no, we're looking at it. We'll have the RFP done before I present any information to the school board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Breschek?
And I also want to add, I'm very appreciative of your diligent efforts, basically every other year, to go through the RFP process, so that we can make sure that we're staying as competitive as possible, especially for the division size that we are. So I look forward to seeing what might be out there next year, acknowledging that healthcare is a very, very tricky space. I also wanted to highlight and further thank your department's work in kicking three, in kicking in that extra 3% for the employer contribution. It's not a huge percent, but it's not nothing, and it shows the sensitivity that we have towards what, you know, the burden that these costs can pose on our employees. So I wanted to highlight that, and thank you.
That was actually Dr. Newman.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We look forward to supporting our employees in this way.
Thank you so much.
Okay, on tonight's action agenda, first up, we have our Equity and Education Proclamation.
Chair, would you like me to read the proclamation again? Did we read it last time? We did read it last time. Then I think we can just move forward. Okay. It is available on board docs, and really, when you think about the proclamation, it's really everything that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee talked about. So, any questions?
Make your motion.
Okay. So, no questions? All right. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Equity and Education Proclamation?
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Equity and Education Proclamation as presented. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that, from my discussion point, that this Equity and Education has to be a part of every decision that we are making up here. And so it's very important, and let's move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all. Also, under new business, we have Resolution R. 2024-04 for the 2021 Virginia Honor Board Association- It's new business. VSBA Business Honor Roll. And presenting this will be Dr. Casada, Director of Strategic Improvement and Accountability. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and School Board members. You thought you'd have a meeting where I didn't get up here, but ha-ha, I'm filling in for Ms. Bradford. So since 2013, the Virginia School Boards Association has given school divisions in the Commonwealth the opportunity to recognize local businesses that support public schools in impactful ways. Tonight, we are asking the School Board to approve Resolution R. 2024-04, naming Comfort Keepers, She/He, and All Assured Solutions to the 2024 VSBA Business Honor Roll. If approved, the three businesses will be notified by VSBA, and we will invite them to another board meeting, where they will receive a copy of the resolution and a certificate noting the honor. So here's the resolution. So, "Whereas, public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community; and whereas, many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools; and whereas, the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system; and whereas, collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly-educated workforce; and whereas, an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of the City of Manassas hereby names Comfort Keepers, She/He, and All Assured Solutions to the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for their ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them."
Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Resolution R. 2024-04, naming Comfort Keepers, She/He, and All Assured Solutions to the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas waive second reading and approve Resolution R. 2024-04, naming Comfort Keepers, She/He, and All Assured Solutions to the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Spall?
Put your mic on. Sorry, I'm just curious. Is this correct, that it's Resolution 2024-04 for the 2021 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, or is it the 2024?
I read 2024.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We look forward to meeting them at an upcoming meeting. Okay, now we're on to biz, Board Member comments, and I'll go first to our student representatives, Ms. Island.
Thank you. Tonight was great. I want to say thank you to our MCPS social workers for all that you do. You're able to really help our community no matter what, help the students, help the parents, help the teachers. I would also like to say thank you to all of our presenters tonight for their clarifications and their presentations, especially the DEI T-shirts. They are beautiful to see. Oh, sorry. I would also like to say thank you to everyone coming out tonight, our audience, and the people that are at home or here in the school. And our marking period ends soon, March 22nd, which is next week. So please stay up to date on your tests and your assignments. And I'd like to wish everyone a great spring break and an amazing Women's History Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bland?
Good evening, everyone. To celebrate Women's History Month, I would like to recognize all the ladies of the School Board and all that serve the Manassas community. As Ms. Island previously said, the end of the quarter ends soon. Let's finish third quarter strong. We have Saturday Learning Seminar this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. Make sure to come and get help if need be. We also have Spirit Week at Osborne next week for, before spring break. Check Schoology for all the themes for the week. Have a great spring break.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I also would like to thank our social workers and their work in high-demand mental health needs. We do appreciate you. Your school communities need you, and we thank you for answering the call every day. Thanks to She/He, Comfort Keepers, and All Assured Solutions. That is going to be an exciting upcoming meeting, so I thank you for your dedication as well. And I just want to let everyone know that we do have a community meeting in two days in this building, which will be giving you updates on our new dean project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Breschek?
Thank you. First, I want to wish everyone who celebrates a Ramadan Kareem. May this upcoming month be prosperous and reflective. For everybody who is observing Lent, which includes myself, hang in there. There's just a few more weeks left. And I also, I want to echo Ms. Spall, we have a special event coming up in two nights. We would like to hear from you and give you the opportunity to hear from us and our architects regarding the new Jenny Dean Building. It will be right here in the old Jenny Dean Building. So the event is open to the public. You need not be a current Jenny Dean family to come. This is for everybody who might be interested in hearing more about the project. We'd love to see you there. Also, due to spring break and our budget calendar, I just want to make people aware that our second School Board meeting of the month is not going to be on its normal cadence. It's going to be on March 21st, which is a Thursday. So if you are a dedicated School Board watcher, please keep that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Breschek. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Thank you both for your comments tonight. They were very, very insightful, and I really appreciate you. Although you're not literally at the table with us, you are at the table with us, and I truly appreciate that. I cannot thank counselors and social workers enough. Their jobs are extremely hard these days. So a very, I am so appreciate, appreciative of everything that you guys do for, for our kiddos. Everybody else pretty much said everything, except I just want to, I've got to give a shout-out. As we announced our Association Business Honor Roll for the Virginia School Board Association, the Chamber of Commerce had their business awards, and although we were not the winners, Manassas City Public School CTE program was a nominee. So I've got to give a shout-out to Ms. Taylor, Mr. Gobbin, and their group. Congratulations. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. I also want to echo the thanks to the social workers and counselors in our school system and elsewhere, because you really do have a hard job. And I also thank you for all of the informative presentations tonight of everything we're trying to do to really broaden our reach to all of our students. And I also want to say that I had the pleasure of shadowing Mr. Di Maria's third grade class at Round Elementary today, and it was such a joy to be in that wonderful environment for the day, watching the students engaged in learning and growing, and the collaboration among the teachers. It's just another reminder that great things are happening in Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Everyone be safe. Spring break, all the kids out there. Just take extra time, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. As Mr. Hollingsworth said, spring break is right around the corner. Make it a time to reflect, relax, enjoy your family. If you don't have any special traditions, it's a good time to set up some new special traditions, even if that means wearing your pajamas all day, drinking coffee, and reading books on the couch. Do what makes you happy and what makes you feel good, and take the time to reconnect with yourself. Thanks.
And I wanted to say thank you to all the citizens and employees that have reached out to us, mostly via email, about the budget. We are still working on it, and we have a work session coming up. So if you have something that you'd like to say, please email us. It doesn't mean you're going to get your own way, but at least you got your voice in, and we will, we will hear you. On March 1st, I attended the opening, the 11th Annual Osborne High School Art Show at Manassas Museum. This exhibit is going to be up through the month, so if you are sticking around for spring break, it's a great place to visit. I'm going to also mention the MCPS Information Night, two nights away, Thursday evening, New Dean Elementary. It's at 7:00 PM right here in this auditorium. We look forward to engaging with you and sharing our plans with you thus fall, this far. All are welcome to join, and/or you can tune in online and listen to the meeting Thursday here, 7:00 PM. Also, March 20th is the E3 Series. It's about youth violence this time, 5:30 PM at Osborne High School. So if the topic of youth violence is on your mind and in your heart, please attend. And I wanted to wish everyone a happy and restorative spring break. I understand Mrs. Williams has a comment?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I neglected to mention that we are opening applications for School Board Representatives, Student School Board Representatives. It will be, it's on the website, the application's on the website. Please look at it, share with any of your friends who may be interested. And the applications are due after spring break. They are due on April 5th at 5:00 PM at Osborne High School. They are available for rising juniors and rising seniors, so please apply. We love, we love the student representatives that are always up here, so please apply. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, saying, don't wait to the last minute, because you do need to ask for some letters of recommendations and several other things on the application. So thank you, Mrs. Williams, for bringing that up. And with that, I will take a motion.
Chair, I move that the School Board meeting adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.